Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Springford Area School District Work Session Monday, October 16th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the Board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the Board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the Board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on Agenda items only. The School Board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. Mrs. Beckett, could we please have a roll call?
Yes. In person this evening, we have Mrs. Dierdorf, Mrs. Hermans, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Mozart, Mr. Schaefer, Mrs. Weingarten, Dr. Wright, and Mrs. Zosowski, and Mrs. Earl is absent.
Thank you very much. As far as announcements go, I would like to make a point with regards to the agenda because this normally isn't how it happens, but we do have a presentation tonight from Mr. Murray, who is a managing director at Stiefel Investment Banking. To accommodate his schedule, he was unable to make the earlier portion of the meeting where we would normally hold our presentations. So you'll see in the agenda that we have the presentation towards the end. So for the Board, it may be best, although you certainly don't have to, it may be best to hold any questions or comments related to finance letters INJ, which has to do with the proposed bond offering to finance Spring City Elementary and the expansion renovations there until we have the presentation. Okay? Thank you very much. Dr. Murray, nice to see you next to me. Any other announcements?
There's no additional announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that said, we will move on to public to be heard on Agenda items only. So for those in the room, if there's anyone that would like to make a comment, please approach the podium with your name, township of residence, as well as the Agenda item for which you are speaking.
Hey, guys. Kathy Morris Royersford. Speaking on Agenda item 6I or J, whichever one. While investing in the school's infrastructure is undoubtedly crucial, it's equally vital to ensure that the students have the necessary resources inside that structure to support their educational journey. Education just isn't about providing the physical facilities. It's about providing quality instruction and offering comprehensive support services. Also, adequate staffing in the building is essential to not just maintain but improve the academic potential. We've seen, unfortunately, that insufficient funding for our teachers and support staff can hinder our ability to attract and retain qualified professionals. Please ensure that we're also considering what we need inside these buildings as much as the actual building themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to approach a podium with your name and township of residence as well as the Agenda item? I'm not going to respond to anything. It's public comment. They can make whatever comment they like and we'll move on. We can make Board comment, though, at the end. Okay? Anyone else that would like to approach the podium? Okay, thank you very much. With that said, I'd like to welcome Mr. Lawler to the podium as we have quite a handful of student achievements to recognize tonight.
All right. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and to celebrate our seniors and their wonderful accomplishments. Springford Area High School is pleased to announce that 21 of our senior students have been named commended students in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. These commended students placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2024 competition by taking the 2022 preliminary SATs last October. Of that 50,000, these students are among only 34,000 commended students nationwide. Although they will not continue in the 2024 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, these scholastically talented seniors have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. We are extremely proud of these students, and I would like to call them up to the front and recognize them and their families who are here with them this evening. When you hear your name, you can come on up. Miguel Powell Alvarez. Mayank Das. Naaman Kandawal. Dorian Lee. Emma Lorch. Alexis Liu. Sean McGuigan. Brooke McPike. Sienna Miller. Taylor Munjan. Nadifa Payla. Eshan Patel. Rebecca Riley. Harjes Singh. Ariyan Shervastava. John Stanek. Zoe Tran. And Matthew Jaeger. in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. What this means is that these 11 students were among the 16,000 highest performers out of more than 1.6 million students in the country who took the 2022 preliminary SATs last October. These high-scoring semifinalists represent less than 1% of our high school seniors. To continue in the competition and be considered for a monetary award, these semifinalists had to take the next step and fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level. Submit a detailed scholarship application, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay and earn SAT scores that confirm the earlier performance on the PSATs. They will be notified in early February if they have advanced to the finalist stage, and monetary scholarship winners will be notified in March. We are immensely proud of these students as well and would like to call them to the front to recognize each of them and their families that are here with them this evening. Sarenia Anapatula. Patrick Bagansky. Samuel McVeigh. Mayak Sangupta. Pragya Seth. Sai Shatar. And Jocelyn White. All right, well done. All right, we have one other student that we want to recognize. Noah Ott took an Advanced Placement test, AP Research, and scored a perfect score on that AP exam. To give you a sense of how impressive that is, he is one of only 357 students in the world to earn every point possible on the AP Research exam. So Noah, come on up. We'll congratulate you. I'm gonna put you out front here, too.
And then also on our agenda, you know, we are going to be recognizing the following Springford Area's teachers, AP teachers, for all their hard work in helping our students get there. So, Dr. Collier.
Great. Thank you very much. My pleasure to be here tonight. A good, you know, lead-in with regards to the successes that our students have had on the PSAT and Noah on the AP. This fall, we were recently notified that Springford Area High School made the AP honor roll again this year. I'm very proud of that. Honor roll is achieved by increased AP enrollment while maintaining or improving the number of students who earn a three or better on the AP exam. So we're certainly very proud of our students' success, and at this point, we'd like to recognize, commend, and acknowledge our AP teachers as well from last year. So we have a couple here with us this evening. I'll congratulate and recommend them first, but we have proclamations for all of our AP teachers. If I could have Mrs. Ritter and Mr. Burgess come up? Several other AP teachers I'd like to recognize as well. Mrs. McAnallen, Mrs. Artaronian, Mr. Ionelli, Mr. Kissel, Mrs. Barnett, Mrs. Farishon, Mrs. Poopoo, Mrs. Giannetto, Mr. Medlar, Mr. Landis, Mrs. Royer, Mr. Tier, Mr. Landis, Mrs. Di Battista, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Walls, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Christofas, Mr. Palmer, Mrs. Miskavich, Mrs. Orts, Mrs. Burkhardt, Mrs. Rudloff, Mr. Strickler, Mrs. Gallagher, Mr. Seltzer, and Mrs. Bogus are all AP teachers last year that contributed to our success and our students' success. So congratulations to all of those teachers as well. Last year, we administered over 1,400 exams during a two-week window in May, and that's the same time we're giving the Keystone exams as well. It's quite a task to run school around the testing of our students in both AP and the Keystone. We have an AP test coordinator, and our Future Planning Center works very, very hard to ensure the best environment possible and so forth for our students. So I also want to recognize our AP test coordinator, Mrs. Sussman, and our Future Planning Center folks, Mrs. Lucinia and Mrs. Valentine as well. So congratulations to them. And it is really a team effort. On several of the testing days, our Health and Phys Ed staff has to give up the gym space to accommodate our testing. So special thanks to our Health and Phys Ed staff who gives up their classroom space essentially to accommodate our testing, and of course, to Mr. Hetrick and our custodial staff for setting up these spaces to accommodate our testing. So a huge thanks goes out to them as well. So thank you very much for allowing me to recognize our AP teachers and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collier, and I don't even know where to start. I mean, such an amazing accomplishment for our students that were recognized here tonight. A lot of times with the accomplishment, it's easy to celebrate, but also recognize that there's so much that goes on in the background. You know, everything from the time, the effort, the perseverance, the grit, the dedication. So again, congratulations to our students and then to our teachers. And, you know, I really think that there is something to be said for teaching an AP course, taking a very complex topic, and dissecting it in ways that resonate with students. And not just focusing on the academics, but also focusing on the environment and being a coach for them and emotional support and really aiding our students in a lot of different ways beyond just the books and, you know, that are going to help them be successful in life. So thank you to our teachers as well. Any other comments, questions? Okay. With that said, we're going to move on our agenda to Board and Committee reports, and we're going to start with our Student Rep Report. Mr. Kahl, Ms. Stein?
Yeah, so as we're kind of in the midst, close to the end now of the first quarter, it went by pretty fast, but a lot's happened and a lot is happening and will happen. So here's just a quick summary of what's going on. So as for some past events, the 10 through 12 held an open house at the end of September on the 21st. We had the College and Career Fair on the 20th, Yom Kippur on the 25th. And of course, the big show of the September month was the Homecoming Dances and Games. The 9-10 Dance was on Friday, September 29th, and the Parade Game, and the 11 and 12 Dance was on the 30th. And as for October, the big thing was the October 7th SAT and the October 11th PSAT, which was administered last week. Both of those, well, the SAT went smoothly, and for the PSAT, there was a nationwide failure with the AP system. But luckily, our trained staff were able to get back on top of that and recover.
So for our future events, we have Red Ribbon Week next week, in which students will be able to participate in several spirit days throughout the entire week. Then we also have our High School Picture Retake Day for any students who were not satisfied with their pictures on the regular picture day, and then Retake Day will be on Friday, October 27th. Halloween events on October 31st, again, another day where students can participate in several spirited Halloween activities. The first quarter ends on November 1st, and then college early action slash decision deadlines for any students who will be going through that application process will be on November 1st. Election Day will be on November 7th, and students will be having off that day. And then finally, parent-teacher conferences on Fall Break will begin on the week of November 20th.
And as always, there's a couple reminders. Clubs are up and running, so students try to get involved. It's a great opportunity for school spirit and also to build your resume for college and also to pick up some new skills. Keep in mind reading these high school headlines and continuing to monitor the weekly updates to make sure that you're aware of everything is key. And as always, keep up with your current assignments and make sure to get on top of any missing work.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for student reps? Thank you both. We're going to go on to Community Relations.
Okay, so this evening will be my last Community Relations report in, oh, eight years. So let's make it a good one. We met in the district. Done. We met in the district office on Tuesday, October 3rd, and that was our first meeting since April. So we had a pretty full meeting, a lot to catch up on. We do meet bimonthly, and then you had the summer, so that was the reason that that was so long. We had started with a NITCH update. NITCH is an online ranking system. It's been in place for years. And our Miss Crew... our Springfield, our Ms. Crew has evaluated its usefulness and applicability. And here with several flaws, it is still accessed by members of our community and even by those who are considering a move to our school district. While the info may not be the most accurate, NICH may be a valuable recruitment tool if we are in fact able to enhance the user experience with valid and reliable data. The cost to improve Springfield's presentation on the site would be $5,600 a year guaranteed for two years, at which time we would reevaluate Springfield's position. Prior to the committee's recommendation to move this forward, however, to the full board for consideration, Ms. Crew will consider other public school review sites and will dig deeper into the benefits versus the challenges presented by paying for upgrades on NICH. So this will be reevaluated in January of 2024, at which time we hope to have even more information. Regarding the ELD Family Connection, Ms. Crew presented that five language-specific Facebook groups have been created to benefit our families, and those have been widely received so far. Also, the Springfield Sign Garden, which some of you may have already seen, Ms. Crew has created five Springfield Sign Gardens at the following locations: the 5th-6th Grade Center, the High School Brook-Limerick, and Spring City Elementary School buildings. The purpose is to allow nonprofits in our footprint to advertise their events in specific locations. There is a process to gain permission, which can be found on the Springfield website. Now, that was all of our new business. Moving on to some of the things that have been ongoing, the first of which is the RCTV Studio. Mr. Rothremmel presented the recent overhaul and improvements made to the RCTV Studio. The studio has been completely redesigned with state-of-the-art technology to benefit our students. The studio is now fully functional. Further, Mr. Rothremmel reported that RCTV will undertake, or did undertake, I hope I'm able to say this at this point, yes, okay, its first bilingual broadcast with coverage of the Springfield Boys Soccer Game, which took place on October 10th during Spanish Heritage Month, no less. So that is definitely a step in the right direction also. Gold Card Updates, Ms. Crew provided an update to include 400 new registrations, with 300 of those wanting Springfield Updates. Kudos to Ms. Crew for the outreach to engage all of our Springfield community members. 2023 PENNSPRA Excellence in Communications submissions and the NSPR, I'll take those at once. Ms. Crew did share again the accomplishments and awards received from PENNSPRA and NSPR, and looking forward, we are looking forward to more recognition of the work and publication of Springfield's outstanding communications, marketing, and media department. Regarding trademarking Springfield graphics, Ms. Crew's department continues to work with Fox Rothschild to trademark our graphics here. So I hope that there's some progress there. Spring has been a very busy time for past and upcoming events, when we talked about those. Spring has been a very busy time, was a very busy time, for the Communications Department. From the time of our last meeting in April, this group kicked into high gear to cover a number of senior events, beginning with Decision Day and culminating with graduation. A most notable addition to this past year were the kindergarteners who walked the stage, the graduation stage, and who will revisit that stage 12 years in the future. Summer was a time to regroup and plan ahead for the new school year. The Communications Department has kicked off the new school year in style. Ms. Crew stated that she is well into planning for the 2023-2024 Parent Speaker Series, and it's already scheduled Eating for Strong Bodies, QPR Training, Healthy Body Image for Teens and Tweens, and a Mock Teen Bedroom, which is on the agenda for approval this evening. So that was our actionable item. And I just want to add that I was and have been very grateful for the privilege it has been to serve as Chair of that committee for many years now. The growth of that committee has been remarkable from day one to now. It's amazing what's taken place, and Ms. Crew so accurately pointed that out for me and captured that for me at that meeting. The work of that department has been nothing less than outstanding. So I'm sure it will continue. And whoever's going to take that seat next, it's just a great committee. I would argue that it's the best. I know Mr. Jackson has different points of view, but that's mine. So, thank you.
He's gonna take it over.
Thank you. Oh, he can take it over, and then he'll see for himself. So, but thank you very much, and a lot of work has been done there, and I'm sure it will continue.
Thank you, Mrs. Zazowski. And to be specific, when you said that Ms. Crew made it very clear for you how much the committee has evolved, we actually got to see Colleen's agenda from her first meeting to her last agenda. So again, we'll have many a time to thank all of our outgoing Board members for their service, but yes.
That agenda from, I don't know how she even found that, and it was so drastically different. It's just really evolved and grown into something very critical to the school district. So I hope that it will always be recognized for the value that it is.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mrs. Zazowski?
Okay, moving on, we did not have extracurricular in October, but we will look forward to having that update in November.
Next week.
So we are going to go right to Policy, where Dr. Murray is going to fill in with the Policy Report. Good evening. Policy met on October 9th. The meeting started at 6:30. Policies 226 and 251 were reviewed and will be brought forward for first reading in October. Policy 202 was reviewed and will be brought forward for first reading in November. Policies 243 and 142 were also reviewed and sent to the solicitor for further review, barring any substantive changes. They'll be brought forward for a second reading, I'm sorry, my apologies, a first reading in November. Policies 143 and 144 were reviewed only, and they will be sent to the solicitor and updated as review only. And Policy 833 will be brought to the November Policy Committee for further consideration. The meeting adjourned at 7:03, and the next meeting is scheduled to be held on November 13th at 6:30 in the District Office Conference Room.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for Dr. Murray? Okay, moving on to Curriculum and Technology. Dr. Wright?
Thank you very much. Curriculum and Technology met on October 9th at 7:30 in the District Office. Technology was short and sweet. We were really looking at the staffing updates. We are in the process of hiring Support Techs, and we are still in the process of hiring our System Administrator. You will see on the agenda a request for additional funds for our temporary, what is it? That's not the right word, for the consultant, consultant for hours for that, so that we can maintain continuity of our services that we provide between now and when we are able to hire and have a new System Administrator in place. And then regarding curriculum, we talked about several very exciting things with curriculum. First, we talked about the Assessment Calendar, which was something that you will see on the agenda also for approval. This basically shows what assessments that we give throughout the year. So then you will also see that we have information on the upcoming Literacy Night. Mrs. Angelucci presented that. The Literacy Night will be held Monday, November 6th, from 6:30 to 8 at the Upper Providence Elementary School for kindergarten through 5th grade students and their families. There will be more information, if you'll look for that in the weekly newsletter, in order to sign up. The theme this year is "Once Upon a Time in Springfield," and it will show how we can align with our standards. Be lots of fun literacy games and activities that align to the curriculum, and a parent and family information table. So if you would like to know more about our literacy program, and you are a parent and a child, K through 5, please come. Then we also talked about, Dr. Reinheimer and Mrs. Garby provided curriculum review updates. So we are looking at math grades 5 through 8 and the Algebra I, science grades 5 and 6, and physics, social studies, 9th grade history, and world languages, AP Spanish, Spanish 5, and AP French. So as you know, we have a schedule for when we can look at all of our curriculum, and that is the upcoming reviews that we'll be doing. Additionally, Mrs. Garby provided information regarding our data team meeting, our trainings to support the comprehensive plan. The trainings included teachers, counselors, and school administrators. The purpose of the training was to provide teams with the opportunity to build collaborative teams around data decision-making. So she talked about that from the beginning of the year. You also, we also had talked about the Title I Family Newsletters. You'll see that there is on the agenda information that we want to approve for the newsletters, and this is out of the Title I funding. You'll also see an action item on the Spanish AP Digital Textbooks. This is an additional resources to our Spanish AP program. So this is a budgeted item. And I believe that covers most of what we discussed. Our next meeting is Monday, November 13th at 7:30 in the District Office Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Questions and comments?
I do have a couple of questions regarding the action item for the additional professional services. So we're asking for another $50,000 from CDW. Last time was $50,000, then it went down to $21,000 for 100 hours, and it was my understanding, and I did verify this, that we were soliciting candidates, and we had four qualified candidates for this position. And the position was advertised for anywhere from $70,000 to $90,000 a year. On the high end, that's $43,000, I mean, $43 an hour. So, you know, dumb engineer and not smart with math here, but we're asking for $50,000 now, again. And I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to square this. Why we are advertising for $43 an hour as the top salary, however, we are requesting $50,000 now, and it doesn't define the number of hours. Last time it was $100, which comes out, simple math, to $210 an hour. So I'm trying to square the math here for this. So if anyone wants to take a shot at it.
Sure, I can address that. You're correct. We have been contracting with CDW to provide support for the System Admin position. If you recall, back in August, we requested additionally, at the time, 250 hours, and we reduced that to 100 hours and not to exceed $22,000. And the Board had asked Mr. Catalano to come back as he's monitoring those hours, should there be a need to add additional hours. Currently, we've used 69 of the 100 approved hours. So we are still in the process of trying to fill that position. And in our conversations, Mr. Catalano is coming back to request additional hours. He is working to fill the position. I cannot necessarily speak to the personnel aspect of that. But with not having a board meeting in December, I asked Mr. Catalano to take the hours out through the end of January, which would bring us to our next board meeting, so that we can be covered, should we continue to have a difficult time filling this position, and making sure that we're covered. So in the Board memo, we did do a breakout of all of the hours that are being requested for this motion and why that was additional. But you can see the average hours that were used per week through those 69 hours, and we took that same formula, so to speak, and took that all the way through the end of January.
However, we're advertising for this position for a top salary of $90,000, which is $43 an hour. But we're asking for $50,000, and this administrator is part-time. I just cannot square the math on this. It just seems, it seems absorbent. This is a part-time position based on the number of hours. So to be back again asking for $50,000, well, up to, but this is, Madam President, I'm just reading what's in the agenda. So I guess I really struggle with this. We're asking for $50,000. We don't know when we're going to have an employee hired, and I'm struggling with why can't, what is the issue here with getting someone? Is it the salary? Is it, what is it that we can't hire this position for? Because we sure can go find a consultant to do this. So I struggle with this, and CDW is one of the largest corporations in the world for this, and for the services that I think we're, that I think are being provided, since they're on a part-time basis, I would think we could do a lot better from a cost perspective.
So, Mr. Jackson, your question has to do largely with the fact that the hiring pipeline, why is it that it's taking so long? Because if we're able to bring someone in-house, we're able to ultimately save dollars.
Right, and this person is part-time, this consultant, and if you use the simple math of last time, $21,000, up to $100 hours, that's $210 an hour. That's almost 400 grand a year, just simple math. So I struggle with the ask on this. Thank you.
And I don't disagree with you. I do think that there are things that we can control and things that we cannot control. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, everything that I've read in the Board memo from Beth, as well as Mr. Catalano, I know that they are doing what they need to do to try to get this expedited as quickly as possible. But, point well taken. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? I almost hear two questions. Okay, I'm hearing two. I'm hearing, what's the challenge with getting the position filled?
Well, last time, we have, the term was, we had four qualified candidates, so I'm just curious.
I think it was offered, from what I read, and I don't know that we can talk about personnel issues.
Recommend that if we want to get into these personnel issues, that we break to executive sessions.
That's okay. I don't need to do that.
I'm looking at the math. I'm looking at the simple dollars that we're being asked to approve.
But then I guess my next question, is CDW really setting the mark for the market for the price, the cost for the time that they're setting it, so we're responding to that, but yet we have a different scale, so to speak, for who we're going to hire? And I think you're pointing out the difference and maybe alluding that that's some of the issue here?
Our top scale is $43 an hour, right? If we go back to the original ask, it was $22,000 for 100 hours, simple math, it's $210 an hour. So we have a consultant that's charging us potentially that amount of money for a job we're advertising that's two times less. Simple math. I'm not getting into personnel matters.
Whereas can them do the same thing?
You could factor in 25% for benefits. It's not going to come up to 200. And I keep in mind, this person is part-time, so then I question what value this person is bringing. If it is that important, however, the person is part-time. It's just questions. I'm asking for a friend, all right?
So I think, I'll reiterate, I think that I captured the essence of what you were asking previously. I think there are things that we can control, what we control, and I also think that, you know, ultimately, the administration is doing what we instructed them to do back in August, when we said that we were going to lower that dollar amount. So I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, Mr. Jackson. There's a need to expedite, and let's hope that we can get this position filled sooner rather than later. Okay, moving on to Finance. Mr. Jackson?
Perfect intro. Finance Committee met on October 10th. There were no questions on agenda items prior to the meeting. Items we discussed on the new business was executive monthly reports through September 30th, 2023. Liquidity is $155 million at the height of the tax collection season. Expenditures also far in accordance with the plan. Assessments, current assessments are at $4.272 billion. Remaining goal is $84 million, not a lot of movement this month. Transfer taxes pacing ahead by $100,000 from last year, 58.4 of the budget is collected year-to-date. Self-funded health insurance pace is close to plan. Food services remain strong, 92,000 meals served, printed more than 1,000 more than last year. This is a renewal year with the contract provider. Old business last month, Mr. Murray went over the bond finance and looking to do a similar presentation tonight, Board Work Session. $10 million bank qualified, max parameters will likely be 10 to 13 million. Mr. Murray will review at the meeting. Another item was Roy Ford's longstanding lease has been memorialized. Same Ts and Cs with a pass-through cost agreement. Constellation Agreement Extension, same legal terms for the past 10 years with an increase in payments in addition to property taxes starting at 1.8 million. Hopefully, this could be finalized in November. Items recommended for discussion at the next meeting, transfers of the transportation software package upgrade with our existing company. Initial costs is $30,000, the first year of installation, migration, training, fees. at the initial setup of 13,000 per year. Current system is 18, I'm sorry, is 8,500. This is a budgeted item, long-term implications. There was a harder discussion regarding requests from the athletic department to replace vehicles. Three Cushman's and three Gators. The current vehicles are well over 10 years. Quotes from our state coast star was $95,000. We're looking to roll a seven-year, looking at a seven-year road. Their electric purchase through the cap reserve fund, and the athletic department will refund plus or minus 14,000 per year to refund the capital reserve. Ms. Zosowski also yelled at us to make sure we go for an audit to offset the cost. We agreed to do that. Auction, offset the cost. Auction, correct. The committee agreed to move forward with this and have Mr. Miscavige present to answer the questions the board members may have. On the board comment, Mr. Jackson said the American Legion would like to extend their current contract with the school district. The contract expires in 2026. To my knowledge, that formal submission, I mean, that request has been formally submitted to the school district, and I'm going to go out on a limb and say it is with Mr. Fitzgerald for review. Publicly heard on agenda items, there are none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
It's not on the agenda. It's not. But.
I understand that it's not, but I thought that we had decided that the finance committee meeting, we were pushing it forward to go on the agenda for this meeting.
Yes, I think, I think that was an oversight, a misunderstanding.
So how do we, how do we make that change on here?
We.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Which item, Mrs. Zosowski?
It is, it is a work session.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can talk about whatever, just as long as we're not voting tonight on that.
All right, okay.
As Ms. Zosowski says, I have one more meeting for finance. As I like to always update the board, we are about six weeks out from the new budget discussion. And one thing that came out of this meeting, every department needs to be submitting the budget. I know we say they do, and it is, but I just want to restate that every department should be submitting the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Questions and comments? And again, if, just to reiterate, if something needs to be adjusted between now and the voting session, we can do that as we create the agenda for the voting meeting next week.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Durov.
What, Mrs. Zosowski, were you asking about the agenda item tonight to discuss the vehicles? Or were you asking about the Legion?
Well, Mrs. Durov, there's, where do you want to start? There's so much there, right? So I think the Legion is probably the easier one to just, I think that was supposed to be on the agenda this evening, and for, and for whatever reason, it is not. But we had a good discussion about it last week. It's not, it's not a huge matter, and it's usually Mr. Jackson who gets upset when there's something on the voting meeting that hasn't been discussed in a work session. But hopefully, since he knows that was supposed to be on the work session for this evening, it will not be a non-issue, to just go ahead and have it on the agenda for the meeting next week. Correct? So who's going to be responsible to make sure that?
What is going on the agenda next week? The extension for, for the Legion?
The extension.
I haven't yet to see any requested changes.
That has not come, come over to you?
So it would be ambitious to get it on for next week.
Okay.
Well, if the member researches me correctly, we've had discussions in the prior, where contracts were not completely reviewed.
I'm, I'm comfortable if the board's comfortable with approving something subject to final review and approval of the solicitor's office and administration. I am okay with that.
Yes, this is a request to where the Ts and Cs remain as-is, and the only modification we, would be the duration.
Why, so I guess, I'm confused why we would vote about it next week, prior to our solicitor reviewing it, when there is a contract that goes through 2026, I believe. And I, by no means, I'm saying I'm not in support of this program, but it, why, what's the rush to vote on it next week, I guess is the question?
There's no rush. If it doesn't get, make the agenda next week, we can do it in November. There's no issue with that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So that brings me back to my other piece to talk about the athletic vehicles. So, because I do see Mr. Miscavige looking very dapper back there in the corner, so would this be the appropriate time to allow him to speak to us about the need for those vehicles?
I think so. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Is there?
Hello, Mr. Miscavige.
So one of the discussions, I'll give you your open door here. So one, one of the items that were, we discussed were the Cushman's and Gators, for lack of a better term. And it was put out there, if questions came up, you would be here to answer any questions. So if the board has any questions at this point in time, they can direct them to you. Thank you.
I'm happy to start. Okay. Thank you very much. So just kind of catch up to date, we currently have three vehicles with athletic department that are approximately like 10 years or more older. We've been using, borrowing three from the grounds, like department, so that we've been utilizing six, which is why the ask is for six as opposed to just three. Is that, am I correct on that from where?
Almost, almost. We have six currently. There's three Gators, and there's three golf carts. Okay, the Gators are approximately 17 years old. The golf carts are 20 years old. One of the three golf carts is rendered useless. It's parked, we can't use it. The other golf carts are, I'll bet, just for lack of better words, on their last leg. And in the board memo, we outlined all of the different repairs that the Gators have had over the last few years. So that is the reason why the ask was to replace them all.
So in the meantime, you have been borrowing, though, from one of the departments?
No.
That was stated at the property meeting?
I think, I think that was missed, I think that was a missed, I think that was a missed quote. There was, there is some shared usage of the machines when they're needed.
Ms., Dr. Wright, that was my error at the committee meeting, as I misunderstood what Mr. Miscavige was telling me earlier that day.
So you've been using, how many vehicles last year were operational for you then?
Five.
You were using five of them?
Correct.
So you're asking to replace six of them?
Correct.
So, so, and I question this so much, not because I don't believe that we should not have the best equipment, and I know that, you know, people have tied, are tying this to the safety of our, our students, which I don't think anybody would want to question, that that is not a top priority of, of anyone who would be at this table and in the admin team. But because by taking this on, it adds right away $14,000 a year to our budget for next year, and we're already looking, you know, we're looking at, potentially at budget increases. So that's why I want to make sure that we're really careful when we're looking at our, at our purchases. So, so it's, it's, I see it as a kind of a big ask. And one of the things is that, is that we have, we only, what months of the year do we use them? Because we're saying that the main reason we have them is for transporting injured students or the potential for injur, injury for our trainers. So our trainers are out there, is it like March to November?
Correct.
Okay, so, so several months they're not used. Now, this goes into Mr. Fink maybe with, with, or maybe Mr. Hunter, because we want to ask you questions before we leave. So there, there are ones that we have, Cushman's and/or Gators, that are in, used with our facilities. So I'm just wondering about this time where we're not using, if we're going to approve these six, or is there going to be an ask for, to replace the ones that are, are being used by the other department? And could this kind of be a collaborative kind of thing? Can we get, you know, the Cushman's so that they have the snow plow that could be used by the other department, so we could put off purchasing for the others? I'm just, want to make sure that we have everything covered here.
Dr. Wright, I can answer. As far as the multi-use for the vehicles, Dan's purpose, their electric golf carts, which really doesn't serve our needs for, for facilities vehicles. The vehicles that we have are actually older than the ones that Dan has, and we have one on the, the agenda for replacement as well. So as far as the, to be able to use, intermingle the vehicles, they're not going to work out. Dan's pick is a significantly lower cost electric vehicle for somewhat light-duty use, not, not for plowing or, you know, salting or snow removal or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. So all six of the vehicles are electric golf carts that you're requesting?
Correct.
And that is the 95,000 for six golf carts? So not Gators?
No, not Gators. Gators would be much more costly.
Okay. All right. So, and then what about, did we consider any leasing? Because it sounds like there's no sharing that we can, we can do, or, and there's, if we're asking for more in your department, is there a possibility that we could upgrade one of these and that would cover that department? Again, I'm just trying to consider everything, and also considering leasing, because that would cut back on potentially other like maintenance costs and things like that? So was that considered at all?
Leasing was not considered as an option, no.
Is that something that would be worth considering? I have never leased a golf cart.
I don't believe that that's an option for golf carts.
So the other, okay, thank you. The other question being, could one of them, could we be looking at five golf carts and one of them potentially be used for Mr. Hunter, for your department, to be shared, since that's what we have been doing and since we don't need all of these from November through March particularly? There's a time when they're not being used for the safety of our students to transport our trainers.
I can't speak for Mr. Hunter, but no, I don't believe that's an option.
But we've been doing it now.
We're only doing it when we're not using it. They were utilizing it for other things, not, not for snow plowing, not for anything that was heavy-duty. I can't speak for Mr. Hunter, he can.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, can you speak to the possibility of sharing a vehicle if it would cut back on our costs?
We can certainly consider something. A lot of the time that the vehicles are being used, it's at the same time. My, my staff are working, and a lot of times the trainers are out before 3:30. My team, ground team, works up to 3:30, and sometimes when we do work events, night events, we use those vehicles as well. So not something that we've really considered. Our vehicle replacement has been, you know, through our, our vehicle replacement plan, and we're up for one of those vehicles this year. So again, as Dan had mentioned, the cost of that particular vehicle is significantly more than what one of the golf carts would be. So I would have to give that some more consideration, look at schedules to see how we would be able to try and share the vehicle, but I have not really given that much thought. Typically, our vehicles are assigned to our staff who are working, and they use them all day, depending on what location you're assigned to.
So thank you very much for that. So you have a vehicle replacement plan so that it's built into your schedule, which is one of the things I, I know that we are working on with the athletic department, and we currently don't have, which is why this goes as a $14,000 a year increase to, you know, our current budget. And then you're saying that you, you use them mainly up until 3:30, and at that point, you know, they're, they're frequently available. And then again, also, we don't use the school one, or the athletic ones. We wouldn't, certainly not be using all of them between November to March. So I don't know. I'm just feeling that there is some room to, to compromise here that might be able to save us a little bit of money and still provide us with the resources that we need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
In all defense, Mr. Fink, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Miscavige, I was very clear at the meeting, if there were questions that the board members had, to submit them to Mr. Fink, so they could do their due diligence prior to coming to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I was going to reiterate that. And actually, let me make sure that there aren't any additional questions for Mr. Miscavige, and we can let him sit down. Mrs. Zosowski?
I brought these up at the meeting, so they're, they're not new questions, just, and I know you clarified that there's six that, that are in question, right? So one question I had was, do we have to do all six at the same time? Could we not phase them in? And I guess I, I know that safety was brought up in that meeting, and certainly in this meeting, and certainly that is priority. Have there been incidents, though, with the current fleet of vehicles or whatever the mixture that you have, that you haven't been able to provide those needed services in a, in a safety situation? Or are we just trying to be, you know, have, like, looking ahead and just being proactive to make sure that we don't have an incident like that, knowing that these vehicles are older and have had so many repairs?
Well, there are two questions in there.
There's two.
To the first one. If we would have, because we don't have a 10-year plan as Mr. Hunter does for vehicle replacement, we're in the process of putting that together right now. If we were going to phase it in, we would have had to have done it a couple of years back. Because of all the repairs that we've had, there have been times where the machines have been down when the trainers need to use them, yes.
And you would then also, I know that, that word auction crept in at the finance meeting and also here, right? So you would be considering auctioning, auctioning off those other?
Correct.
Okay. And that would offset that 14,000 a year, which could reduce it somewhat?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Miscavige?
I, yeah, I have a question, but not for Mr. Miscavige.
Okay, one second. Anything else for Mr. Miscavige? Should we let him sit down if he needs?
I do have a question.
Well, did you prepare it ahead of time, though? And give it to him?
Dr. Wright?
My question is in reference to, now, you know, you bumped me off what I was going to say. God will distract it. The 10-year plan. So you mentioned that you, that the athletics department is working on a 10-year plan so that we kind of have these rolling costs and kind of aren't, you know, abruptly dropped $95,000 on us, so that we're planning for it. So I know you're working on it. Do you have any estimate of when we can expect that to be completed?
Mr. Fink and I have been working on it since last spring, and it is something that, it's going to be a living, breathing document. So as soon as we can get something, we will get it to you.
Like the end of this year, or?
I hope to have it. It's, it's one of my goals for the year, so yes, it'll be before the end of the year.
That would be great, just so, you know, so that we can all be proactively planning for these costs. And then the last thing that I, this is not towards you, Mr. Miscavige, maybe if Mr. Fink or Mr. Jackson could clarify the, the agenda item, how it's being paid? Because it says the cost shall not exceed $95,000 and will be initially funded by cap reserve and then replenished by the athletics operating budget over seven years. So I know that Mrs. Wright had, or Dr. Wright had mentioned a $14,000 a year impact on the budget, but if we could really get that broken down into, into, into word, you know, to clarify it the way that, that more people would understand, like how that's going to impact our budget percentage, perhaps?
I don't know, 0.000003? I don't know.
I mean, it does all add up. I'm not, I'm not being flippant in making that statement, but I think it's, it's hard to conceptualize if you're not working with these documents and on, on the committee and dealing with the budget to kind of understand, like, okay, so we're going to pay for it, then it's going to get paid back, and then how does that impact our taxpayers?
So, Mr. Fitzgerald, in your opinion, is there, is that something that has merit? Should we should be including how it's repaid back into the voting agenda item? I know it was in the board memo and it was specified there, and we heard our administration echo that. Do you see a need to put that in the voting?
Difference between merit and legally required.
Okay.
So legally required, the agenda items is fine. It talks about what the cost is that will be incurred by the organization. Whether the board wants to add more to it to explain that, community-wise, that, that's really a board, board decision.
I was just kind of asking, like, here now, a simple explanation, but I said it, so that's fine. We can move on.
If we decide to do this for this, then it opens the door for every other item of the 300 and, 3,515 line items within the budget. So if you look at 200, 200 million dollar budget, round numbers, and divide 14,000 by that, it is a very minute, it's, it's less than what we're going to pay for CDW. by that, it is a very minute, it's less than what we're going to pay for CDW. Some perspective.
It's all relative. All right. So, any other questions for Mr. Miscavige?
I do have one more question, more of a clarifying statement. So how many children are in athletics that these, that would be using, potentially using these vehicles?
We have approximately thirteen-hundred athletes, grade seven to twelve.
Okay, and so you're asking for six vehicles to help with thirteen-thousand?
Thirteen hundred, correct.
Thirteen-hundred students. And how many different buildings are they at? Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Miscavige? Okay, thank you. I do want to just make one point of clarification, going back, take the breadcrumb trail back to what we talked about before, going back to the Spring City American Legion. I'm going to ask Mr. Fink and Mr. Jackson, just to double-check that it was, in fact, discussed in committee. It seems like there might be a question as to whether it was fully discussed in committee, and that the committee did not discuss moving it forward. So again, I'm glad that the question came up with regards to sense of urgency and timeline, but just want to make sure that our chairperson and our administrator can have that conversation, and make sure that we are moving forward in the right manner. So, moving on to property, Mr. Jackson.
Hey, property. August tenth, there was no public comments on agenda items. Ongoing business, high school emergency generator replacement. We discussed the pricing for the turnkey replacement, and the transfer switch through CoStar contracting with Eastern Generator. This will be a board agenda item for approval. You need a generator in your schools. Just want to clarify that. There was discussion regarding school police and safety update, project and initiatives. S2S, S2SS tips, eighteen since September twelfth. There have been eleven light-speed investigations, camera update, phase three, grants, the second part of the PCCD grant, thirty-eight, forty-three-nine, is the purchase of eight, of eighty digital radios and a hundred-and-fifty-four spare batteries. The radios and batteries are a vital part of the overall security for the district and community plan. Door renumbering project continues. That Limerick Elementary and Evans Elementary School was completed October third. On the new business, vehicle purchasing, we discussed the challenge of the last three years with the COVID impact, and the purchasing commercial vehicles, and how, and how the process has impacted the district. We, we schedule our vehicles on a fifteen-year cycle. We discussed getting preapproval for a not-to-exceed amount through CoStar vendor, which will allow us to purchase through a dealer on a lot inventory. This year, we're replacing a heavy-duty pickup and a utility grounds vehicle. This will be on the board agenda for approval. That request is because of the impacts of getting cars, trucks, and material throughout the country. Items recommended for discussion at the next board meeting, the replacement of the high school generator through Eastern Generator, board approval for two vehicles through CoStar participating vendor, approval for phase-three security lighting upgrade project, approval for additional security monitors, and approval for relocation, security camera, command center. There were no questions at the end of the meeting. I would ask community board members, do you have questions about property? Do you have questions about buildings? Do you have questions about equipment? Please come to property. We will discuss it in detail for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jackson on property?
How many wheels are on those vehicles?
Four.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was a fast one. So we'll move on to MCIU with Dr. Wright.
Right. So we had our MCIU meeting, oop, hold on, on September twenty-seventh. The next meeting is November fifteenth. I did not get the updated notes from the IU yet, but we did have an HR presentation, and I think the most important thing that came out of it was that the MCIU Education Foundation is having a Monte Carlo night on November tenth in Blue Bell. So if you want to support it, that goes towards the programs and initiatives that the MCIU has, which help our students. Also, there was information regarding a grant for gifted, and it was a big grant. And so, but I want to discuss that when Dr. G is here, and as to see as to how we will be able to participate in that. So that's all I have for tonight. If I have more information in the next meeting, I will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Okay, Dr. Murray?
I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge the presentations we heard earlier, and offer my congratulations to the students, families, and teachers. They are certainly making us proud. Today, we held a professional development session for grades K to twelve. Thank you to our curriculum department for developing an in-depth professional development plan to support all of our teachers and instructional assistants. The special education, the Spring Ford Special Education Advisory Committee, known as CPAC, met on September twenty-seventh, where a presentation was given on OT and social skills. In addition, the Professional Development Task Force met on October third to begin discussing plans for next year already. We are also excited for upcoming fall play, Radium Girl. The fall play will take place November third at seven o'clock, and November fourth at one and seven. And I was going to provide an update on the literacy night, but Dr. Wright already beat me to that, so that is my report. Thank you, Dr. Murray. Questions and comments?
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, anything?
Yes, just briefly, and it's in anticipation of Mr. Murray coming up to speak in a few minutes, and it's with regard to section six, I and J. On the agenda, you have a resolution twenty-three-dash-zero-five. That will be the parameters resolution. Our office has drafted it. You should be receiving a copy of that tomorrow for your review in anticipation of voting next week. You will also be receiving a reimbursement resolution. This is a mechanism in which costs have been incurred through your general fund surrounding this entire project and the financing, that will allow us to essentially reimburse ourselves through the financing process. So that will be also included on the agenda for next week. And then finally, we've reviewed the bond purchasing agreement with our changes as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on, we will review the action items that we'll be voting on for next week. So we'll start with section four minutes, A and B. Any questions or comments? Personnel, section five, letters A through H. Finance, section six, letters A through J. Keep in mind, we will be talking about I and J as we hear Mr. Murray's presentation shortly.
I did want to make a comment about I and J. It doesn't matter about his presentation, but I will not be here next week, and I don't want my attendance to reflect my support or non-support, since I won't be able to vote on this. I one-hundred percent support this, and look forward to making progress in Spring City.
Thank you, Mrs. Dierdorf.
You will not be able to vote?
I will not be at the meeting next week.
You will not, you could call in and vote, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I may be able to.
I would encourage maybe some remote participation for that.
Thank you, Ms. Dierdorf.
I'll call.
Try, try.
All right. So we'll take that offline. Section six, finance, letters A through J. Any other questions?
Yes, I actually have a question about A, the administration recommendation, the approval of Tom Stecker and Associates for the Fall and Spring Unity Day at the high school, with the cost not to exceed four thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Murray. I am still on finance, letters A through J, to see if there are any questions.
Oh, I apologize.
No worries. Is there anything else on finance, before we move on to programming curriculum?
I just want to, I just want to ask Mr. Jackson, because I think I'm a little bit unclear. Did you mention about the transportation piece? Because I don't see that listed in here either. I thought that was
We
also coming on here tonight.
We pulled that due to some additional information that came in regarding a lower vendor. So Mr. Fink and his team was reviewing that. So that's why it was pulled.
That's why it was pulled, okay. So it wasn't It wasn't about what was on here, it was about what wasn't on here. So that's why it was.
Okay, any other questions on finance? Okay, moving on to property. My apologies, I misspoke a moment ago. Property, letters A through E. Programming and curriculum, letters A through G. Dr. Wright, you had a question on A?
I did. Thank you very much. I apologize for jumping ahead there. So it's regarding A there, and this was not discussed at the Curriculum Council meetings, so I wanted to be able to have the discussion here regarding the approval of Tom Stecker and Associates for the Fall-Spring Unity Day at the high school, with the cost not to exceed four thousand dollars to be paid from the Pottstown Health and Wellness Grant. So I guess I just had a couple of questions about, I know that we have used Tom Stecker's services for this grant, or I believe that we have for multiple years. And I was hoping for some feedback regarding the Unity Day, and how that that is, and I actually wanted to turn to our student reps to talk a little bit about how they feel if that money is well-used before we assign it to Tom Stecker, or if there's a better way we thought that we could use that, or something. Thank you.
Yeah, I can start off with this one. So I have not participated in Unity Day myself, but I have a lot of friends who have, and they all found the experience very enjoyable, and they learned a lot from it. So for those of you who don't know at home, or just on the board in general, but Unity Day is basically a day where fifty students, nine through twelve, they have the opportunity taught by Stecker, Tom Stecker and Associates. They're given the opportunities to sort of learn about networking, and they learn to network with each other, leadership skills, and sort of creating a advocacy and socially-aware environment. And so it's a very impactful message that he has, and he's pushed to our students. And those students can then take that experience, not just apply that in their Springford experiences, but outside of Springford. And, you know, from what I've seen, and from what I've heard, it's a great program, and that day is very important to some people, and to a lot of people, actually. And everyone I know that's done it has really enjoyed it and found the experience to be meaningful. So I do think it's a good use of money, and a good use of the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. I love the fact that, in spite of not having participated indirectly, you can still speak to it, and that its reputation kind of precedes the day. So I really appreciate that. Dr. Murray, anything else you would add?
No, I think you did an excellent job. I also appreciate that as well. I think that this is something that we have done for several years, and that the high school staff is very comfortable with this, this program. They are looking to run a Fall and Spring Unity Day. We are very fortunate and thankful from the Pottstown Health and Wellness Grant that we can fund that through this, through this process. So the high school has really been happy with the product. I mentioned when we presented last year on social-emotional learning within the district, that we do look for multiple vendors throughout the district, but this is one program that we have continued with Tom Stecker, because I believe that the high school is very happy with it. And again, I appreciate your feedback. I think that definitely sums it up.
Thank you. I could, if I could just ask, though, if we could find out before the next board meeting, how many years we have been running this program with Tom Stecker? And maybe just a little bit of feedback from your staff and other students, too, about the effectiveness? I mean, we like to keep data, we like to look at data, and maybe some considerations that if we, of a different vendor, or of ways that we could maybe tweak the program so that it's better suited. I don't know whether we've collected that or not, but if we could kind of take a look at that, I would appreciate it. I know we've been using them for a number of years, and I'm hoping it's effective. Thank you.
Dr. Wright, if I recall correctly, I believe that with this topic came up specifically as it relates to this vendor last year, and Dr. G was here, I don't know if she'll be with us next week, but there was a concern that was possibly brought up by Mr. Jackson around the overuse, or, you know, directing monies to specifically one vendor in this area. And I think the feedback that we got from Dr. G is that, as it relates to skills like this, right, the leadership, the interpersonal skills, the social-emotional, we actually partner with a lot of vendors, and it is not necessarily the case that we are specific to, specifically tied to this one, but I would love to hear Dr. G, for you to answer those questions, and come back next week, and maybe Dr. G can reiterate.
I would like to add to that, that I was one also that was asking about Tom Stecker, Stecker, I can't, I can't say it right, Stecker. Anyway, about him, and about using other vendors, and that was talked about, that there are other vendors. So I don't think in any way that Dr. Wright, and Dr. Wright, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you were saying in any way to look at different programming, that Unity Day sounds like it's a benefit. Right. But that, you know, have we also considered other vendors to maybe enhance the program a little bit more? And if not, you know, obviously there's a track record, so okay on that, but if we're not surveying maybe not only the students, but the teachers that are involved, if we haven't been doing that after these events, maybe we should be doing that going forward. And that would give us the data that we're looking for going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on programming and curriculum?
We change board members every four years, so I don't see why we can't evaluate vendors on a more regular basis.
So you keep coming back. We're happy about that.
All right. Any other questions with programming and curriculum?
I still go back to my comments regarding E. This has not been squared. This is not going to be squared. This is money. I just do not see the benefit here. We say this person, my words, from the previous discussions, are instrumental to the operation of the system here, but this person's on a part-time basis. So I'm trying to square the logic of that. And we go with CDW for fifty thousand dollars. I keep harping on that for a reason. It's forty-three thousand an hour we're advertising, but we're looking at substantially more than what we're advertising, I have a full-time person. And you can throw in benefits, a car, whatever, it's not going to come up to this dollar value. And I'm just not sure that this is being thought out. I brought this up before with CDW, I'm bringing it up again. Fifty thousand dollars is absurd to be asking for a part-time person. And I don't care if it's running to June of next year. It's fifty thousand dollars of an individual, I'm sorry, fifty thousand dollars that we're looking to spend for a consultant on a part-time basis. So I just question, how valid is this person, and how real is this cost?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Noted, noted once again. Mrs. Dierdorf?
I just wanted to add, I wanted to say this earlier, when we were on this item in your finance report, but according to the board memo, and I did confirm that I can say this, according to the board memo that we got on Friday, I believe there were final interviews today for that position. So hopefully, it is something that's a little closer than later with this amount of money.
But this request for approval runs this money.
I understand that. I just wanted to clarify that statement, because there was some conversation about where are we in the hiring process, and what is going on. So I just wanted to add that.
And I appreciate that, Ms. Dierdorf, I really do. However, this is a request for fifty thousand dollars to go to the end of January, but we're looking to hire someone, hopefully, this week. I don't get the logic with that.
Would it help if we put in there until the other person could, the new hire, could begin?
No. My issue here, Dr. Wright, is we're advertising a position for forty-three dollars an hour. That's ninety-one thousand dollars and change, simple math. Forty-three thousand an hour, but this is a key, for the approval of this request, this person is a key individual on a part-time basis. The logic just isn't there. It's fundamentally not there.
Mr. Jackson, I hear your point of view. I don't disagree with your point of view. You're entitled to your point of view. I do see the logic in, personally, for me, I speak only for myself, I see the logic in putting this voting item on the agenda, with the hopes that, Mrs. Dierdorf, that we don't actually have to get anywhere near the up-to, not to exceed, amount of fifty thousand dollars, if the hiring process plays out its contingency, in my view. But we, I respect your opinion, and yes, I understand where you stand with this. Any questions?
Thank you.
Other questions with programming and curriculum? Okay, moving on to conferences and workshops, letters A through D. Other business, A is just a first read, so really, we're just going to be voting on letter B. And that takes us to Mr. Murray of Stiefel Investments. Please approach the podium.
Thank you very much. As Mr. Fitzgerald said, on your agenda for next, for next week is a resolution to incur debt in the amount of $13,000, or sorry, what is it? $14 million, sorry, $14 million. Again, I'll go quickly through this presentation, it has not varied too much from the presentation I gave, I guess, at the Finance and Facilities meeting last, in October, two weeks ago. But ostensibly, what we're asking you to do is, we're assuming that, hold on, here we go, that you're going forward with the Spring City Elementary School, we're recommending that you break the project up into two pieces because of what we call bank-qualified, meaning if the bond issue is less than $10 million, or $10 million or less, the school district will receive lower interest rates, number one, for the debt it's incurring, which is what we want to do. And number two, it'll have a shorter call feature, meaning you'll be able to call these bonds, refund these bonds if interest rates are lower in the future. And that's also very important to us, as we're all aware, interest rates have moved up, mortgages have moved up, interest rates are a little bit higher than they were from the historic lows, but what we're looking to do is finance with tax-exempt long-term indebtedness with the option that you can call it in five years. So the motion before you, coming forward, will be to incur the debt at amounts not to exceed certain parameters. We will move diligently through the next two or three weeks, that's when we really make the sausage, we'll be having, getting the rating, having the official statement approved, talking with bond counsel, and Mr. Fitzgerald, making sure all the documents for the investors are correct, and, well, that they're correct. So everything will be done in that period of time, and we will sell the bonds, subject to those parameters, sometime within the next two weeks. This presentation does have a timeline that we're sticking to, and the idea here is we need to be closed, because bank-qualified is $10 million in any given year, so we want to close this issue, and we'll close it by mid-December, is our guidelines now. And then the second piece will be done when you need the funds, next year, probably at the end of next year, or the middle of next year, after bids are received, and we know exactly what the remaining amount. So being flexible will have you, you know, able to get exactly what you need when you need it, and give you the opportunity to get the proceeds and get the project started. There's a whole bunch more in here, but it's very similar to what you saw two weeks ago, so if there's any questions related to the parameters, if there's any question related to the resolution itself, again, you're pledging your general obligating taxing power, their parity with all your other outstanding indebtedness, and these will be bank-qualified with a five-year call. We're asking you for a higher than $10 million, again, because we don't know exactly where the bonds will be, and this is similar to the way that we've done all your bonds. I can guarantee you, it will not be over $10 million, because it has to be. We're asking you for a higher parameter, but it will not be over $10 million, because it needs to be at that level. So that's what it's going to be.
Mr. Murray, can you remind me, for the 2016 and 2018 bond issuance, where we did something similar with the qualified bonds, what were the proceeds used for? Do you recall, or does anyone in the administration recall? Maybe Mr. Fink?
The 2018 was for the high school.
Okay, the addition to the high school, okay.
High school addition, I know that one, the 16 I cannot pull out of the bag.
Okay, no worries, that's fine.
I'm going to say in 2016, it was probably a refunding-
Got it.
-of other indebtedness.
Yep.
Because there was nothing else there. In my recollection, it would have been something that had a small amount remaining, $6 million of a much larger bond issue sometime before, and we could get some savings out of it.
Thank you.
There was no other new money project in 2016, it had to be a refunding.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just make one other comment before deferring it to the board for any questions or comments, just as I've made comments before like this, being in the securities industry, I will just have to, again, publicly state that it is a conflict of interest for me to vote on the issuance of any type of bond, given that I work for a municipal dealer, and as much as I get excited about talking about call features and refunding, I am going to have to abstain from next week's vote.
Sure.
Ms. Hermans, your question about the proceeds from the last time bonds were issued in this method for the high school, I think you asked if anybody from the administration as well knows what that was used for, because-
I think, no, my question was answered, I just wanted to know what the proceeds were used for, so it was the high school expansion, and then the 2016 was a potential refunding.
It was, I just confirmed it. We had a 2015 and then a 2016 refunding.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, did you have any other comment?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Murray?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Section 12, Board Comments.
Thank you very much, I had a comment. So this is something I've been thinking about for a while, and I attended a Diwali celebration this weekend, which was with a lot of our community members, and it was, it was great fun. And I just, I remember reading an article in an education magazine a year or so ago about a high school student who was from South Asia, and that one of the things that their school district had done was to start to incorporate into their lunch offerings vegetarian meals that were, you know, recipes and things that were more from the region, Indian foods, things. And that this made that student feel very welcome and included within the district, and also that the additional result was that other students that were not from that region had the opportunity to try different foods, foods from different cultures. I don't know anything about what we offer. My children are out of the district, are grown. I know that we, Aramark does our food, and as far as I know, they do a very good job with it. I know from when I was in school, there were, you know, Friday vegetarian meals offered that were like peanut butter and jelly, cheese pizza, and iceberg lettuce, and a salad, and not necessarily desire, well, I hope that there's more offerings now. But in thinking about this, I was wondering if this was something that might interest our students, so, and perhaps our faculty into providing different offers, offerings, and then it also occurred to me, or actually was shared with me, that this might, we might want to extend this also to vegan meals too. And so I'm not saying these things aren't being done, I'm just kind of curious if this is something that is worth pursuing for our district, so. We have students here, I don't know if you can talk to what is offered, or whether you see any merit to what I'm saying here.
Yeah, I can, excuse me, yeah, I can add to that. I actually do think that that would be a great idea, because there are a bunch of students in our school that do enjoy buying lunch, but I just know that from what my friends say, and just from what other students say, they get a little bit tired of just eating like cheese pizza, and maybe just like a salad every day. And even when we go up in the cafeteria, there, I don't know if you guys can see, but there are special signs that like show like special meals, and for some reason, they're usually not up there, and I just know that some students like me, for example, I remember when I saw those when I first came to the high school, I was pretty excited about those like special meals, but they're never really there. So I think that maybe if we do add more, like more, I don't know how to say it, more interesting food options for our students, I feel like there would be a lot more buzz in school and in the cafeteria, and I just think that students would be more enthusiastic about buying lunch than they are right now, because I just feel like, like I said before, the plain cheese pizza or plain salads are just really not motivating students to buy lunch as often. So I think that's a great idea, it would bring more, it would be more inclusive for all of our students, and the vegan options, vegetarian options, and even options from different cultures, like you said, I think that would just be a great way for Springfield to like expand the diversity of what we have to offer. So I think that is a great idea that we could hopefully try to implement sometime soon.
As I mentioned during the Finance Committee Report, this is a renewal year for Aramark, Aramark. So this is something that can be pursued, it can be looked at in a broader sense, as once you open the door up for one type of food, potentially other students may want similar requests, and we will also have to look at what's involved with preparing this food. Will it require additional equipment, special equipment? So it's a much broader discussion, but we are preparing to discuss renewal with Aramark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and that's exactly what I was going to suggest, is that if it hasn't specifically been brought up in committee, that we discuss that in Finance as it's under Mr. Fink's wheelhouse, or purview. Thank you. Any-
So, well, I'm sorry, I just, just in where we're ending with that, are we just going to wait to address it with the Aramark when we do the contract, or is it something that maybe we wanted to look to do, if there was an interest survey, or something like that?
You guys brought it up.
Can administration want to get back about it?
I would have hoped there's been some due diligence before this is being put out there, something means I want to do the homework, and you have an idea, because I can't, when I say, we can't go to Aramark if we don't have any idea of what's been requested.
But that's what I'm wondering about, how we would pursue that before we would go to Aramark. So is that something, Aramark, is this something that perhaps we could task administration with just looking into and maybe getting an idea about what the interest would be? So I'm kind of asking, I guess, Mrs. Hermans, it goes to you, I'm kind of asking, if there is enough interest at the board table to pursue that?
Well, again, if it's the will of the board and there's a directive here, then there is that. I mean, my personal recommendation would be to wait for Finance Committee meeting in November to have a conversation with Mr. Fink, where he could kind of give us his point of view on this, and then decide how to move forward. But if you want to make a motion to see if there's five people, then of course, that is within your ability.
So I'm kind of interested in the qualitative, not just the quantitative, you know, data that-
Oh, agreed, I am as well.
So I wonder if, I guess I would put forth the motion, whether we, or to, I don't even know, does it count as a motion, I think, Mr. Fitzgerald, if it's just if we're looking if the board has an interest in pursuing, having the administration pursue, whether this would be something that we would be even interested in?
I don't know if we need a motion necessarily, if there's, if there's support of a majority here, then the administration can informally-
It can simply be brought up in Finance.
In Finance.
Right, I would think that more of a role of a school board would be to ask that the Chair of that committee add that to the agenda, and then discuss it there. I don't think broadly, our role of governance is to rule at a meeting what the students are eating for lunch. But I would totally be open to discussing it at committee, and support putting that on the agenda.
Okay, so I don't think that I, that was quite the way I was looking at this, but I would suggest then that anybody that would be interested in this topic would want to attend the Finance meeting, or provide input. Prior to that, you certainly can write to your school board members, and we'll get some of that information there, and I'll look forward to the Finance meeting.
Sounds good. Any other questions, I'm sorry, board comment, any other board comment?
My only comment is, I don't know what happened for the past seven minutes, but I'm not getting that back in my life. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, appreciate the comment, any other board comment?
Just a couple of things, Phillies, I went in for zero, and Ms. Deardorff did the math. So the $14,000 on a $200 million budget, get your pencils ready, 0.0107748%.
How much is that per month?
Per month, per capita?
Roughly 85 cents, plus or minus.
Okay, but, but, Mr. Jackson- Since you brought it up, I was also-
That's a real number, just hold on.
No, I appreciate that. And I apologize that I didn't think of this earlier, but since we want to talk about these vehicles again, is, I'd be curious to ask if we have looked into leasing? I believe that golf courses lease their vehicles, so.
Well, then that was, that is the opposite of what Mr. Miscavige said at the podium, and maybe that could be, you could have a conversation with him about that, and if that's something that we can, but his answer was no, at the podium.
I just want to say one thing, Mr. Jackson, if you recall when we were reviewing the budget earlier this year, you said, you know, all year long, everybody agrees to do this and to do that, and this goes in the cart, and that goes in the cart, then we get to the end, and everybody doesn't want to pay for it. So it may be a really small number, it may be a really small number, but in the end, it is going to be one of those items that's going to push that agenda, that budget forward, just to be conscious of that. Not saying do it or don't do it, I'm saying that we are buying something that we are going to pay for, and it is going to come into, to play later when we're looking at how full that cart is for the different things that we've thrown in there during the year that we now have to pay for.
Can I, can I respond to that?
But then apply-
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson, one second. Mr. Jackson made no other statement than putting forward what the tax impact would be for $14,000 a year. He did not make any other statement, he did not imply anything else, it was just a statement of fact, and from that somehow, I think we've extrapolated that he feels that the position of others is wrong. He didn't say that, so I don't want to go down that.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that it is part of the cost that we'll incur, and that we'll have to look at when we're looking at the budget later. That's all that I'm saying, based on the fact.
Both, and both statements can be true, yes.
And based on the, another fact, that, just as a reminder, that the tax index for this coming year is 5.3%, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that was definitely discussed at Finance. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to public to be heard, this can be on any item, not specific to the agenda. Please approach the podium with your name and township of residence.
Dave Lackey, Limerick Township. I'm here once again to express my wholehearted, I saw the time didn't start there. I'm here once again to express my wholehearted support for the Spring City Elementary Expansion Project, and I'll be keeping, and I'll keep coming up to this podium as many times as necessary until this vital work gets done. Spring City Elementary holds a special place in our community's history, dating back to its opening in 1959, replacing the old Church Street School. Today, it stands as a symbol of our commitment to education and the future of our children. I want to put these improvements into context, this project encompasses a lot, and it's worth repeating. It's a thorough renovation of the existing building to breathe new life into the heart of the community, adding 7,000 square feet. It creates a large conference room, a guidance room, a space for a psychologist to support our students' social and emotional needs. It provides small group instruction spaces for breakout sessions and special needs. It offers two full-size learning support classrooms. It provides spaces for occupational therapy, physical therapy, gifted programs, speech, individualized support teams, reading and math. It creates dedicated spaces, such as an art room with a kiln and storage, a music room with a breakout space, and a ramper's room with storage. It addresses the long overdue deferred maintenance to ensure the safety and functionality of the school. It resolves current capacity issues within the building, ensuring that our students are not ever crowded. It also creates greater capacity for future grade reconfiguration, and the potential for full-day kindergarten. It maintains Spring City Elementary as a neighborhood school, ensuring its place in the heart of our community, and it enhances the educational program at Spring City Elementary to provide our students with the best possible learning experience. Lastly, let's not forget about our teachers and staff. We say we value our teachers and want to prioritize retention and professional development, giving them a great place to work as part of that equation and should not be overstated. Our principal, our teacher, staff, administration, our cafeteria team, our instructional assistants, our janitorial team, everyone that comes to work there deserves to have the space and tools, they need to do their jobs well, and feel supported. Ms. Santelgi, a nurse at Spring City Elementary, Ms. Pisikow, a second-grade teacher, Ms. Dombrowski, a first-grade teacher, these are real people we trust with the education and well-being of our children with. Let's give them what they need to succeed, and what other schools already provide their staff. Now, some of the opposition to these renovations are based on a strawman argument, that fixing one part of the problem doesn't fix others, and therefore, it's not worth our time, energy, or investment. This is a naive and unproductive lens to look through which to view the problems facing our district, and the solutions at our disposal to address them. Some may ask, how does solving overcrowding or providing necessary spaces improve learning loss and reading proficiency? If I had to summarize, which I don't like to do, because these issues are nuanced and require critical eye, it's challenging to improve academics with crumbling infrastructure that does not meet our current capacity, let alone the growth we should be planning for.
Excuse me, Mr. Lackey, that is time, I apologize, I was just texting Ms. Grub at the clock, so that is time, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next.
Hi, Diana Kirsch Royersford. I noticed there was a decent amount of time spent on discussing certain expenses, which is good, but you guys kind of glossed right past, and maybe it was discussed in a committee meeting, I couldn't be sure, but the $370 grand planned for- for camera upgrades, I mean, I, as a property manager, I know how much these things cost. So I would be curious to know, are these replacement cameras, what kind of cameras are they? These things can run as much as 2,000 or more dollars per camera, and it just seems like a lot of money to be spending on cameras when you're kind of worrying about vehicles to transport maybe an athlete that gets hurt, or something like that.
Thank you.
Hello, Tony Patrick from Oaks. One, I want to, that Otte boy, I want to like thank him, like 100% on a test is awesome, the AP exam. And Mr. Clinton, I agree with you with this $50,000, come off of it. You know, you're advertising something for $43 an hour, and then what, the person's going to come in, interview, and you want to give them $22.50 an hour? I would like to say, no, you guys just advertised for $43. I want the $43. And nowhere does it come out to be $50,000 for 250 hours, part-time, it's only $10,750. So why would we budget for almost $40,000 for a job that's not there yet? And, okay, and then the next thing with the lunches, yes, we should have had healthy, diversified food for all-inclusive that we want to do here. They should have been already accounted for last year or two years ago, when we started seeing the influx of the different nationalities moving into our school district. So somebody drop the ball on that for these children. And for the taxes, like, another 5.3%, you guys are so like democratic here that you just love spending our money. 70% of our neighbors aren't living, are living like paycheck to paycheck now, and the food prices are going up. Are you guys really considering doing that kind of stuff? The vehicles, the golf carts, six golf carts, not the gators, golf carts. I just did my research real quick. You could get an electric golf cart for $79.99, times six, that's like $8,000 times six, not $93,000. You just doubled the price for that. And then, for the most part, keeping track of the school board here in the process of this increase in the school debt, you know, probably $50 million right now, it's less than one year you guys have spent this. And I'm just like, do you guys even like talk to us people, us neighbors, the people paying the taxes here for you guys? 5.3%, what's the feedback? I want to hear your feedbacks. And then I just want to know about this pay survey. I came across this. I don't know how you guys can just ignore this kind of stuff, to go and, to children that are 10 to 19 years old and ask them about their sexual behaviors in their households. What was the survey for? And who benefits from getting this survey? Are the parents like really like agreeing to this? I'm shocked when I read these questions, have you smoked cigarettes? Okay, that's light one. But have you had methamphetamines, ecstasy? I'm just shocked. I'm shocked. Did you guys even read this?
Okay.
I am sending this to my, to other people to see this.
All right, we're at three minutes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You gave that guy like five minutes.
No, actually, we cut him off at three minutes. Thank you very much.
No, you didn't.
You did not, because I didn't see the clock. We have clocks. Thank you. Like to address name, township, or residence?
Teresa Westwood, Royersford. First of all, I wasn't going to speak about this, but the 5.3% is an index that started by the state. It's not a tax increase, just to be super clear, because you didn't vote on a tax increase yet. Couple things. One, and congrats to all the students that were recommended as committed and semifinalists for 2024. Also, congrats to Noah Ott for earning a perfect score on the AP placement exam. It's amazing to see the achievement of the students in this district, so really nice to get to highlight that. I also appreciate the presentation of the financing options for Spring City Elementary. Like Eric, I have the same piece where I can't really comment on anything due to my position, but I appreciate the diligence of the district to lower the interest rates and to also offer shorter call features, which I think are important, given the interest rate environment we could be headed into next year into the future. I'm also excited to see the progress of these, of the important infrastructure investments in Spring City Elementary. I've talked about this a couple of times. You've already heard it from others, so I'm not going to go into detail, but this is an important step forward to giving Spring City Elementary equitable educational experience for their teachers and for their students. Lastly, the behavior of some board members tonight and in other sessions is rude and unprofessional. As a member of the public, it's embarrassing at times to watch the way that you are not respectful to one another. I hope, as I go forward and watch some of these meetings as a member of the public, that you can try to listen to one another and respect each other's opinion, even if it does waste your time or you don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach a podium? Okay, as I oftentimes need to do, there is some information that needs to be corrected. Number one, there was a question with regards to the $370,000 for the cameras. The statement was correct. It was discussed in the property committee meeting. And for those who aren't familiar nor attend committee meetings, that is where the work, really, the bulk of the work gets done, so that when we come to these work sessions, a lot of it has already been discussed. So please do not take a board member raising a question with every single action item to be a lack of discussion. It could have just been that the discussion happened previously, as Mr. Jackson can confirm, that was discussed in property meeting. Secondly, with regards to our school lunches, I would not agree that they are unhealthy, quote-unquote unhealthy, as school lunches are governed by the USDA. So there are strict requirements that have to be followed, and Springfield does follow those. And then lastly, as mentioned in the last comment, 5.3% is not a tax impact that the school district is levying at this point in time. In fact, the budgetary process has not started. We are going to have our proposed preliminary budget presentation at the end of November. The 5.3% is simply an index that is set by the state that determines what the appropriate, I shouldn't say appropriate, what the maximum tax impact a school district can levy is without going to referendum. So that is set by the state every September, and as mentioned in finance, it was just a fact. It's 5.3% this year. Any other questions or comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?